Call the order. Town of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting. Today is Thursday, March 8th, March 3rd, and it's 6:03 PM. Ms. Benitez, please.
Okay. Commissioner Adam. Commissioner Kapalongo already told me he will not be here tonight. Commissioner Pro.
Present.
Vice Chair Frost. Chairman Pronzo.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance. What place it is to say that?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Moving right along. Is that thing on? Wow. Is this all new equipment? I guess we've got to break it in. Or break it, one or the other.
Don't break it.
I'm on the verge. Okay. Moving right along. Discussion, approval, or disapproval of the minutes of the regular meeting conducted on February 17th, 2022. And I'll open it up to the commission.
Nothing here.
Well, then I'll take your silence as no questions or comments. Is that correct?
Yes.
May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Pro, second by Commissioner Adam. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. New business presentation, approval, approval with conditions or denial of a request for an interpretation of the town of Florence downtown commercial zoning ordinance for tobacco and tobacco-related uses. I understand the presentation. I understand the discussion. I do not understand what we're approving or denying.
So the interpretation today is to override the development code. So the applicant currently owns a tobacco shop in the city of Coolidge. They want to expand into Florence, and they're looking at a building currently in the town of Florence, but in the downtown commercial zoning. It is the second Nicholas Beer Hall as pictured here. Now, the DC zoning currently does not allow tobacco-related uses in the code, and here's the part that states it. What we are looking for is an interpretation to override that, not permitted, to let the tobacco retail be permitted in the commercial zoning, but this interpretation is just to approve that override so then staff can go on to make the amendment in the code to make it a permitted use in the downtown zoning. And then we will issue a temporary use permit for this applicant if it is approved in order to let them move along with their process. Now to...
Is that good enough, that being read into the minutes as far as what we're approving and disapproving?
I'll also reiterate it towards the end when you guys are about to deliberate and when you're going to go making the motion.
Okay.
So just to make sure, this would actually be a code amendment we're approving?
Yes, we're looking for interpretation to amend the code to allow tobacco retail within the downtown commercial zoning.
Mr. Chairman, Marissa, this would basically give staff permission to start that amendment process?
Right.
So then that would actually come back to us for approval and go on and be blessed by the council eventually, right?
Yes. For the amendment, it will have to go through the commission and the council, and in the meanwhile, we will get the temporary use permit if approved for the applicant so they can move forward.
Okay. And we would see that temporary use permit too, wouldn't we?
Yes, and it needs to come to the commission to be approved.
Mr. Chairman, what would the reason be not to approve tobacco?
Well, that's what we're going to deliberate.
Oh, okay.
But I imagine Ms. Benitez has some kind of presentation?
Yes.
Let's get through that, but I want to make it clear that the agenda really does not reflect what our intent is.
Right, and when I was writing it, it was difficult to kind of put that into words because we were interpreting it just there were other steps that went along with that interpretation, and I had a difficult time putting that into words within the agenda.
Okay, well, I think we've outlined it, and as long as it's a part of the minutes.
When I write out the action...
Yeah, I don't imagine there's much public interest anyway, but...
When I write out the action in the actual action minutes, I'll reflect what we're actually going to approve or disapprove here tonight.
Okay. Let's move on to the presentation.
So the applicant applied for this interpretation because they're looking to lease a building to put in a tobacco shop. Now, I don't know the reason why the tobacco-related retail was not allowed before, but the shop that they're looking to do will not have smoking permitted in the store. They're looking to sell tobacco, tobacco blends, and other related items, vape cartridges, cigars, items of that area. They are not selling items such as like hookahs or bongs. That's not what they sell in Coolidge as well. Now, they requested in their letter that the reason to allow this is that within the downtown commercial zoning, some uses that are permitted are billiards, parlor, taverns, liquor stores, and all those are kind of in the same realm as tobacco in terms, I don't even, I would say in moral, in the moral realm of why we have this here in the downtown area. So all these services are allowed within downtown commercials. It's just interesting that tobacco-related items are not. Another reason is in 2021, town council did approve the sale of medical and recreational marijuana in all business zones, including the downtown commercial zone. So to not allow tobacco-related uses retail, but to allow marijuana uses, it doesn't quite make sense. There's really no difference between those, other than the sale and how they've taken or purchased these products. Tobacco-related retail would also allow for an increase in foot traffic in the area, and it would provide to a more specialty service that you don't see in the downtown or within Now, the interpretation as stated is to override the code and to allow staff to start amending to allow tobacco retail within the downtown commercial zoning. So if approved, staff will start to amend the code, and we will also put in a temporary use permit to allow the applicant to move forward and to let us to start amending it. So the Planning and Zoning Commission may move to approve staff to move forward with the amendment and with a temporary use permit for this applicant and override the code. The commission could also approve to allow this to go forward, but with a conditional use permit required, and that means it needs to go through commission and council. Or the commission can deny this interpretation or this request overall. So those are the options for tonight's movement or action. And we do have the gentleman here who put in the request. So if you do have any questions, he's here to answer those. But that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to start this discussion.
Okay.
I'm going to prefix my discussion by saying that I doubt there are more than a handful of people in this town who want to see the lease of this building go through. I've watched as the town tried to demolish the building. I've watched as Tom and his wife invested in the building and brought it back to where it is today. The building once had a dentist in it. We were successful in chasing him out through over-aggressive code enforcement. So I really would like to see the building come back to life. With that said, in your presentation, it states that uses such as taverns and liquor store permitted use within the downtown commercial area. But we have to remember that the rest of that sentence says ancillary to restaurant use. We need the full picture there. A tobacco shop would not be ancillary to anything but the nicotine addicts that live in our neighborhood. Town council permitted the use of recreational marijuana in 2021, just last year. There's two areas that need to be considered. First of all, marijuana requires a state license, and it's overseen by the state, at least to date, under a magnifying glass. And secondly, the approval of marijuana in the DC area was not received well by the people who live in the DC area. Motivation, of course, was sales tax revenue. Tobacco and tobacco products currently are allowed in the B2 area, out on the highway, whatever. In the DC area, as far as foot traffic is concerned, it is my personal opinion, not the opinion of my fellow members, that the foot traffic it would generate would not have any impact, no positive impact, in terms of the amount of people. In my personal opinion, tobacco is no longer a mainstream product. It depends on addiction. I am a lifelong nicotine addict to this day. I understand the addiction to nicotine is very powerful. I'm willing to consider a conditional use permit, but I personally have a negative bias as much as I want that building leased. So I'll turn it over to the rest of the commission. I'd like to hear their opinions as well.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
Yeah, I think you're correct with the reality that, you know, cigarette smoking especially is declining, but cigar smoking is a segment of that tobacco that is pretty popular, and I think it's growing. The difference between, and I voted against the marijuana thing. I wasn't in favor of that, but the reality is they voted for it. Marijuana is a controlled substance. Tobacco is not. I think this person who's applying for it is a successful businessman in Coolidge.
Not in the downtown area.
But he is successful. He has positive sales, obviously. Like you, I want to see, I would like to see that downtown developing. This person has an interest in that particular site. He's willing to take the risk, and I don't know what conditions we would approve this on. I don't know what the conditions would be, but I would not be opposed to allowing him or to allowing this business to, you know, to go into effect. So that's my opinion. Like you, though, I was a nicotine addict until 1982.
Well, I guess now's my time to walk the talk as a longtime resident and after having been on the Historic District Commission. Absolutely. A business downtown, we must have, right? And we don't get to pick and choose the boutiquey types of businesses. I'm not a smoker, so it's not my favorite thing. I did go by your store in Coolidge, and I understand you are running a very successful business. I don't know how much you understand about this building. This is a significant contributor to our district. Maybe we don't have it definitively, but by the style, we believe it was designed by the architect James Creighton, who also did our second Pennell courthouse. And so it's a very important building. I think, and again, I have no issue with your building. It's interesting to me that the Pennell market can sell cigarettes, but we have some sort of ordinance that says you can't just sell cigarettes. So we are already selling tobacco in the district, in fact, right? So not to single you out because of your business. What I did notice where your business looks a lot like our former, the market that sold beer. And for some reason with liquor, and it looks like tobacco, these posters, these brand posters seems to come with the business. I don't know if this required by your distributors. So when I drove past your store, there was a large picture of a beautiful woman in a bikini with the brand name Raw. So my only plea would be that is the main path supervisors from our county courthouse use to get to our downtown, and they come every day to get their lunch and their coffee. And I think if you're going to introduce the types of visitors they have to the courthouse, I'm not really loving those posters, although I understand we don't have the right to tell you not to put them up. I would ask you to give some consideration to what you're publicizing on the outside. And again, just try to take in the ambiance of that. We are working really hard to clean up our downtown, and quite a lot of money and effort has gone into the Quinn building, Catty Corner, to your building, as well as your next-door neighbor, the first Nicholas Beer Hall. That has been totally redone. So you're in between two beautiful buildings. But no, I think I welcome the business.
I'll speak up, and I agree with what has been said here completely, that we need to bring positive business into the downtown, and I'm pleased to see that someone is taking a step forward to do this. I have never used tobacco products. I'm not in favor of them, but I definitely favor a businessman trying to do what he wants to do, and I think everybody should have the liberty if they want to use tobacco products. My desire not to should not stand in their way of wanting to, so. But I was totally confused by this, and we're looking for an interpretation of something that blatantly in the code says no. But apparently, interpretation is the legalistic term that we have to use to allow this to move forward, to go through a code revision, and then the interim, if we choose to allow the business to come in, it either needs to come in under a temporary or conditional use permit. And I, like my fellow commissioner down here, need to understand a little bit more the difference between a temporary use permit and a conditional use permit, and what conditions we would attach to this that we would not have in a temporary, just so that I understand what the pros and the cons of each of those would be in getting him started.
So a temporary use permit has a time limit on it. There's two years that it can be in business. A use can be there, and then it needs to be renewed or they need to go elsewhere. Where a conditional use permit is stuck on the land, and it's there for as long as the business is there. That's the main difference. A conditional use permit will go to commission and council, and we'll have public hearings, where I believe a temporary use permit won't have all that things. It'll come to the commission. We may have a hearing, but that's kind of where it ends.
Okay, so, and I guess following up on Commissioner Adam's concern about some of the advertising motifs that could be there in contrast to the character of the building, if we say, okay, well, we agree with a temporary use permit while you move forward to get the code changed, could a temporary use permit contain a condition that, I don't know how to word it, tasteful advertising be used, or something complimentary to the district be used? Or if we do that, do we have to use a conditional use permit because we're imposing a condition? Just educate me a little bit, or educate us a little more.
I looked into that, and I was on the sign committee when we went through years ago, as the chair might remember. I think it was the city of Gilbert, right? It went to the Supreme Court about signage, and you cannot regulate content. We can, that is just, as I understand it, not an option. You know, my First Amendment, you know, I'm kind of a liberal out there about what businesses should be allowed to do on their property, so I don't really want to regulate, but ask nicely. I think that's all we can do. I mean, there's a line which is clearly obscene, right? And I don't think we're going there. But there is a concern I had when I saw that poster, and especially with, it's, you know, I think that that kind of gives a connotation, and I'm not really understanding if that was a requirement by the brands that you do business with. So I didn't want to follow up on this. So on the conditional and the temporary, what is the point of the conditional? So if we do the conditional, it still has to go to council, is that right? Back to us and council? Okay, and so eventually, the intent is to make that an actual amendment, which also has to come to us and council?
Right, if approved.
So why don't we just go to the amendment?
It takes time, and he wants to open.
But my question is, if you do the conditional and council doesn't approve the conditional or the amendment, if we don't get there, right? If we approve the conditional today, it still has to go to council before he can open?
Right.
So that would pretty much say council will agree with the amendment? Is that what we're saying? So if it's still going to council, why don't we just do the amendment?
Is there a time element here we need to understand? Because I know if it goes to council, there's advertising, there's all these other things, and I'm assuming this gentleman would like to open sooner than later, and that's why you're proposing a temporary permit to get him open.
Right, the temporary is a lot faster where the conditional use permit is like a 90-day process, where the temporary use permit is just a month, maybe less.
Marissa, I noticed that in the literature agenda, it says a one-year temporary use permit, and what you just said was two-year.
Right, the one-year was just that this approval would last for a year, so if things happened where we couldn't get that temporary use permit coming through, then this interpretation request would still be approved, or we would still have your permission to override it, where if we do the temporary use permit, then that's set in stone, ready to go. It's in writing, and that gives him more time.
Okay, so just so that I, maybe I didn't follow that, but if we did a temporary use permit and we said it's a one-year, are you comfortable that within one year's time that you can get the process through council? And I guess if you can get it through council, then that's good. The problem is if the council says no, then at the end of his year, then all bets are off, and he's got to close business?
No, the temporary use permit will be two years. So this...
Let's say two years comes. Does that mean, okay, you got to close down now because?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I hope we would get it through in two years, but like you said, then yes, at that point, they would have to close down.
I'm just wondering if the council votes no, we're not going to authorize this use, we're not going to amend this, then he's got two years of business in the town, and that's it. Whereas if they amend it, then it's going to come back through the process, and he's permanently set up because the code has been changed.
Right. And with the two years, at least, if council does disagree, then he could still have time to look for either a new building or to decide whether he wants to stay or go.
And the applicant understands that and is willing to roll the dice. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Commissioners, I think the whole idea here was just like we do many times with many businesses coming into town, is try to work through, keep things rolling while we more or less change the tire on the car as it goes, without saying, I think it's been spoken many times in here that we have a number of codes that we have been trying to go through in our codes to change, and this is one that kind of got caught in the middle of things because of the tobacco and all of that and the marijuana, the changes. So I think it was for us, it was an effort to try to keep things going for the applicant at the same time, you know, trying to make this change, so.
Mr. Chairman, don't misinterpret my thoughts. I support this. I just don't want to get him in a catch-22 here either, so.
Right.
And so by doing this, tobacco shop B comes into town and wants to open up in the district. They're zoned to, they're automatically approved by zoning. Is that correct?
At that point, we would wait for the amendment?
Well, once, I'm sorry, yes, once the amendment, once we actually make the amendment to the zoning, so we allow tobacco in the district, any tobacco shop can come in?
Right, because it's tobacco retailer.
Okay.
So how do we expedite this process so that staff, you know, makes the amendment so this man can, you know, go into business and start producing sales and the benefit of Florence and so on? How long a period is this to, you know, to amend the code?
The amendment would probably take about 90 days as well, just because we have to get that advertising out. I'd have to start setting up the calendar as soon as, if it was approved, to go ahead and make this amendment change, and at the same time, while I'm making this amendment change.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
I just have to take in consideration the state statutes that I have to follow. So I would say about 90 days, more or less. It'd probably be less because this is all kind of straightforward. When I bring it back, it would come through the commission and the council. I could try to make it work as well. I just have to get in that advertising, public hearings and such.
Okay.
Are you ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, and I'd like to do it in a polling fashion. We'll make a motion, we'll second the motion, and poll our vote so that our opinions are expressed.
Okay. Let me just take a stab at the motion.
Please.
Okay, I'll take a stab at the motion.
Go for it.
Okay. I move for an interpretation of the town of Florence downtown commercial zoning ordinance to allow for tobacco-related uses, and in this instance, to allow the applicant on a roll enterprises to be authorized to receive a temporary use permit, and then direct staff to move forward to amend the code to allow this in the downtown commercial area.
May I have a second?
I'll second. I couldn't repeat that, but I second.
Do you have any opinion to express?
Yes, I do, and again, I can't say strongly enough how special that building is and how disturbed the neighbors and I would be, and I believe the Historic District Commission, I can't speak for them, of course, but it is a special building as we're trying to build the town's reputation, and our county has a lot of eyeballs on us right now. Pennell County is the fastest-growing county, and its proximity to the courthouse, so it's a really important corridor, but the good news for you is there's a lot of foot traffic going back and forth there, so it's a good thing. So thank you.
Commissioner Pro.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, my opinion that I expressed earlier still stands. I, I have no objection to, I, I think it's good that, that folks like this man wants to take a risk here in Florence. It's going to, you know, it's a business. And he's taking the risk, so I, I think we should, I, I don't think, I think one of the issues that we've had here in Florence, from what I've heard, is that it's difficult sometimes for some folks to get started in business here. We make it very difficult in, in, in certain instances. And I would like to see us, you know, streamline that. I know the general plan is part of that. But let's, you know, let's make this, the guy wants to take a risk. It's not immoral. Well, I guess from some folks it is, but it is a business. It's legitimate, and I have no objection at all to, to allowing this to happen.
So we have three yeses. My opinion, you've heard most of it in my opening statements. I also have to consider that the tobacco shop will be right across the street from a residential area. Considering how the agenda was written, I don't know if the folks that live across the street are aware of what we're doing or not. But in the absence of any presence, I have to assume that they are and that they don't care. I am not pleased with a tobacco shop opening in the downtown area. Sometimes I feel like we rush to anything that'll fill a vacant building in the downtown area. We've seen this in other development that has taken place in Flo, in Florence. But as I said in my opening comments, I was open to conditions and has been discussed, and a part of the move is that we would approve a temporary use permit. Is that correct? Then I'll, I'll vote yes for that. So then we have four yeses and no opposed.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair? I just wanted to say that I did notify some of the people in the area. They've not spoken up, but we do have a commissioner from H-DAC here this evening. I don't know if this is proper procedure. I just wanted to make note of that.
All right. So anyway, this matter is closed, and it's up to you to make it happen. Moving right along. Discussion of the General Plan and Water Supply Work Session with the Town Council on Monday, February 28, 2022. Is there a presentation to this?
No, this was just a general discussion about what took place at the work session on Monday. If anyone had last comments or questions, I just kind of set it in there.
I just have a question for the water guru. When I read that chart, all the way out to 2052, I think it was?
2055.
2055, yeah.
And at the bottom, it said a population of 250,000. And Florence has zero water needed, which I understand, zero water needed. But when I did the math, and I don't remember the exact number, it was somewhere between four and 5,000 acre feet of excess water. Is that correct? Is that the right way to say that?
That's why the chart was a little bit confusing, because I, I, like you, I do the math.
Yeah.
And, and then the math says zero, then, but then you have to read, then you read the title, and it says the amount needed, where you don't, you don't need anymore. So that's a true state. It's just kind of confusing.
Yeah, zero is zero, but it could have said surplus with an asterisk. But okay, so now I understand it. So please, turn the water on. Water the grass in the parks. We got water. I couldn't let that go. I really couldn't let that go. Padilla Park, all of the grass is dead, and I mean dead. God. Okay.
I, I did let Mr. Harmer and Director Eaton know. I thought that it was really well done. I was really happy between our first work session and the second one, that it seemed like they really listened to the people and made quite a lot of changes. And I particularly liked that in the left margin, they noted what our comments were, so we could understand where they were being heard and what adjustments they made. So I'm hopeful that more people will participate and will end up with a really well-done plan. But it really depends on community participation.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have turned in rip comments to Maricela, and one of the general comments that I made was I believe that the document is still too verbose, still too wordy, and has too much jargon and stuff in it. So it makes the person who wants to read the general plan go, what does this really mean? Causes questions. And so I suggested that they pare it down even more. And so it's truly general, and then put a, a, a note in there that says, if you would like the specific details of this, refer them to the Water Resources Master Plan that, that is being prepared right now, just to, just to try to generalize it even more. Because we keep hearing that, so they're trying to take this plan that had all these zoning areas and pare it down. I think this could be pared down a little bit more and make it a little more readable, and just give somebody the message that, yes, we have enough water out to 2055 to this population, and understand that when they do it 10 years from now, they're going to need to look and, and see what they need to do. So that, that was just a general comment that I made.
Well, I don't disagree. It took me a couple of tries to get through it. But the one thing I like the most is that systematically, it requires ongoing management. It can't be shelved. I like that. We have to play heads-up ball with this thing. You can push things out because it's not time to do it. But there has to be something on the plate, and we have to look at what we've accomplished. And that is an important step for this town, believe me. Okay, any other questions or comments?
I will say that on March 9, from 5:00 to 7:00, we will have that open house for the community meeting that has general plan stuff there as well. People want to attend and take another look around, just so the public has another chance. And this is at the community center.
Maricela, I don't know if it's too late or not. It's probably too late. One of the most-read newspapers in town is actually for free, comes in your mailbox, and it's called The Independent.
Yes.
If you want to inform people what's going on, you might want to take a look at those folks. It is widely read. I think it's a little too late for this open house, but it's something to look at.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I, since you brought the, brought that up, The Independent, this last issue talked about the tap room that's coming.
Yeah.
And I had some comments from some, several of my neighbors. The chart that they printed in there was, it was very difficult to understand the-
Right, but we, we can't go there.
Oh, okay, pardon me. All right.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right.
Okay. I guess we've beat that one down pretty good. Got a two-sided copy. I'm not used to that. All right, presentation, information only, future agenda items.
We have a preliminary plat coming back to the commission to be extended, its approval to be extended. This is for Freedom Farms. When I send it out, I'll make sure to attach the PUD with this preliminary plat, so you guys can look it over. It was approved last year, but their approval is coming to an end, and they need that extension to continue on with development, since they're looking actually to do so. That's one item that's going to come back. We also have a conditional use permit that has been put in. Staff still has to review it, so I don't quite know when it's going to come yet. And we've also gotten a PUD amendment that was also submitted this past week, and I need to schedule that as well. So those are some things to look forward. That PUD amendment is for Dobson Farms. So these are the items that may come in the future. And the next meeting will be the preliminary plat for Freedom Farms.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I request something?
Sure.
Probably about a year and a half ago, we looked at a development coming in north of Esseropon Judd, the, the big sports complex. If, if you just, it'd be interesting to just get a little bit of, a two-sentence update on that, just to see where that's at. I haven't heard anything about it for eight or nine months now. Thank you.
Okay. Call it a public. Call it public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning, Zoning Commission. Do we have any public? Then I will close. Call it a public. Call it a commission, current events only. Do we have any news? Really? Okay. Then there's only one thing left to do, folks. Call for a motion for adjournment. So we have a, a motion by Commissioner Adam, seconded by Vice Chair Frost. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adj-